As many of the guests in City Council now come to ordering the chair calls off City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the role.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Councilman Stewart is absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Eddie Nichols to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
If you will pray with me. Father, we come before your presence this morning to thank you for another day alive, for the health that we enjoy, for the opportunity to meet together, make decisions that are going to, Father, govern this city. I pray for each man behind these tables, that you will give them wisdom far beyond their own. As these decisions are made, let us not just seek the counsel of man, but let us seek the only wise counsel, and that's you. We give this meeting to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the City Council meeting held on July the 2nd.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of June the 28th through July the 4th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
I want to ask Mr. Nichols, please come back up and tell us about what you've got going in town.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. My name's Eddie Nichols with Breakaway Ministries. I want to thank the council, the president, for letting us come and explain to you what's going on. We began this last year, working with the city and their department, painting houses throughout the city, doing other kinds of mission work. We had groups from Wyoming, Colorado here last year. This year, we've got, we already had a group from Tuscaloosa come a few weeks ago, and so we thought we'd ask and see if we could at least recognize this group that came from Nashville, near Dothen, and went from Steel, Alabama. And I'm going to recognize them in just a moment, but what we're doing is we have two houses that we've been working with Becky Henson on, and we're painting these houses. It's beautiful. One of the ladies came out on Cherry Street saying, you know, I had eight times that this has been promised that somebody'd paint this house. Went out there today, and she just said, "It's raining." I said, "It doesn't matter." I said, "I told you unless the raptor comes, we're painting this house one way or the other." So we're determined to meet the needs and love working with the city on these, but we're also down at Colley Homes on Sixth Street, as well as over in the Emerson Housing Community, and we're doing backyard Bible clubs and vacation Bible school all week with those kids. At the transition home that we have, there's a shed that's been torn down the back, there's a group that's rebuilding that, putting us a shed up so we can store a lot of the things that are donated to us. The clothes closet that we have, we've got six volunteers that are over there, and we've got a bunch of young people that are there as well. Stuff all over this city is going on, and it's these groups that have come in. And guys, we're trying not to do this thing where it's just once a year, or just one day. We want to bring these groups in from out of town and let them plant seed, and then take these church groups that we've got here in Gaston to continue this on a daily basis and an ongoing basis. That's where the change, that's where the difference is going to be made. And so that's what our goal is, that's where our plan's been from the beginning, and I'm so excited that these people have come, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to call them up and introduce them, let them just say a word to you as well as y'all to them. You guys will come on up with me. First, I'll introduce Mary Franklin to you. She's the youth minister at Chandler Mountain there in Steel, Alabama, and I'll let her say hello and whatever she's going to say.
Thank you for having us here today. Kind of caught by surprise, we didn't know we were coming, so we're not dressed our best. We're sweaty, we've been working, but I just want to say, we're getting a lot out of this, being able to help somebody and being able to minister to them. And we have eight children from our church that are helping this week, and we also participated last year. And being able to do work in your community and help people, we see a need in our community too, where we need to branch out and help our community. And we're just hoping that everything that we're doing, other churches or even people in the community could see what we're doing and maybe inspire them to take it on and maybe do something themselves. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Hey, my name's John David Thompson, I'm from Franklin, Tennessee. I just want to thank you all just for letting us come this week. Eddie organized all this, and we've brought, I think, 27 youth, and they're over in one of the housing developments, and just really having a good time playing with the kids, and hopefully they'll be able to learn something here, and maybe they'll even want to do it back home. But I'm just really glad that Eddie was able to organize this for us. Thank you all.
My name is Brad Reader, I'm from Slocombe, Alabama. I'm the youth minister at our church, and we were here last year, and we feel privileged to be back again this year. And our goal is to take the 11 that we have with us and to go back and to see that what we're doing here needs to be done in our hometown, in and around the Dothen area, and we hope that this sparks something to where it's not just in Slocombe or just in Gaston, but this starts to go statewide and beyond that, to where we're spreading the gospel and living it out, not just talking, but working, and being the hands and feet of Christ on a day-to-day basis for everyone, so that they can see what it really means to be a Christian.
I was going to tell you, we do this during the daytime and at night, the gathering downtown on Cheston is letting us use their facility. We have our worship services and stuff that goes on for these groups at night. Seven o'clock, if y'all want to drop by tonight, tomorrow night or Thursday, we'd love to have you. You notice the shirt that they paint in? Yeah, we, I just thought I'd throw that in for y'all to see. Thank y'all so much, council, appreciate you. Thank you, Eddie.
Eddie, we want to thank you, Eddie, for the work you do, and we appreciate the mission people who are coming into our community, helping young people and improving our community. So again, we just want to thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Mr. President, I want to thank you, Eddie. Me and Eddie grew up together, we've been around each other a long time, he's a great guy, and he really cares about the community and the city, and he cares about individual souls, and he's just out there for the right reason. I appreciate you, Eddie, for everything you do. Thank you. Rockler Mason, Mayor?
No.
Unfinished business, we have none. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution authorizing application for a justice assistance grant. The funds would be used to purchase tactical equipment and in-car cameras, and the amount is $27,705. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have two resolutions I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. The first is a resolution awarding bid number 3238 to James Watson's for the drainage, for the drainage project on Stroud Avenue.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a budgeted $196,000 for the Stroud Avenue Drainage Project, of which the county will share this project with us 50/50. So this is phase two of the drainage problem. We had phase one last year, it's completed, this will, after this is completed, it should resolve all of our drainage problems on Stroud Avenue.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, the other is a resolution, the other item that I have is a resolution awarding bid number 3242 to Beatty and Sanders for a, the bridge aluminum structure plate and head wall and wing wall for the bridge on Springfield Avenue.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, as we know, all the bids that were submitted earlier this year for this project were rejected because of them being out of the price range that we thought they should be. Our engineering department has gone and taken this bid into two sections now, one for part, well, I like to say parts, and then one for labor, but basically that's what it is. So we've divided into two sections now, and this is one of the sections for the approval of the material, so that we can go ahead and get the material in, and the labor will be bid later.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item to consider today, it's an ordinance authorizing amendment to the 2013 CDBG budget.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is, again, an ordinance to amend the 2013 CDBG budget. This is actually a bit of good news in that what was projected in terms of our allocation for the block grant program was actually lower than the actual allocation, so the amount is approximately $87,250, and that's broken out into, again, the increased allocation and a roughly $4,778 commitment of additional unprogrammed or unassigned funds.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items, two resolutions. The first resolution I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider is authorizing the satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
At this time, I'll make a motion that we accept $400 for a nuisance abatement lien at 716 Hilliard Street.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And by the way, the money's in the vault. The second one is a resolution amended exhibit 6.8A. This is a financial agreement between the city and Wells Fargo Bank, so I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
This is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You want to?
No, I was going to say you did this, or, go ahead, say what you say, I'll say anything.
Yeah, well, you go ahead, if you want to talk about it.
Well, we had allocated that money for a bridge on Tuscaloosa Avenue. When you go across, you can actually see the creek under it, it's so bad. And anyway, our city engineer, Mr. Harris, who's a very smart fellow, got us a grant through ATRIP, $600,000 with a 150 match, and so now the resolution that we're asking for will allow the bond refinanced money to be used for other capital projects throughout the city, including the mountain bike trail construction at Knockalittle Falls, park renovation of a portion of the boardwalk at Jim Martin Wildlife Park, and additional paving throughout the districts, and also some needed drainage projects. I didn't know if you had that.
Yeah, I did, that's okay, make a motion, we'll prove.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Is there any further discussion?
Nah, he did, he did a great job.
Okay. Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right.
Any other new business? Department reports, committed, amended, remarked by the mayor and the council. Ben, you want to start?
Sure, I'm sitting here with a thought.
You thought so?
No, no.
Wow!
You know, I know it's uncommon to me to have a thought, but really, I'm happy with it.
It worries me.
In fact, I think I worried the mayor. How many churches we got in this town?
Nine thousand.
You couldn't?
Baptist associations, I think, Scotty, the ninety-seven, a hundred and two.
You couldn't go to, you couldn't go to one per Sunday and cover them all in a year.
And during the week, most all those churches empty. And I can't get it through my head that we're trying to get things going for the youth that are around here, when all these churches empty, we've got all these pastors that could be getting involved to get together, Dever, especially, because you're looking for ways. And I just can't see all of it being empty, why in the world they don't get together as a group? And I think Billy said, the PR and getting the word out, how better could you get it out than on church on Sunday to older people in the church who've got grandchildren and children, the young people who are there, and the ones roaming the streets, their grandmother and granddaddy are in that church, they could help get them heck into there to doing something in that church to get a project going. We got vacation Bible school, and then everybody forgets about it the rest of the year. And all these other ones are being just scummed out.
I tend to agree with that, if I can comment on that, and I tend to agree with that, and I think one of the things that's coming out of the advisory council movement is that they are discussing actively a role that churches can play, in particular with the void being left with the idling of the Boys and Girls Club location, so.
But what a better group of people who are dedicated to supposedly the citizens of this town and to, you can't mention a whole lot of things religiously, to get together and get this thing going. I'm calling on the preachers. Now, they used to, back in 94 to 98, they all got together and came up here and prayed for me, but I was raising cane back then too. You know, but it works, I guarantee you, because the Bob members and so does Robert. They get out there, about fifteen of them in a group, and they put the eyeball on you, you know, and you kind of slow down just a little bit. Of course, I had Dawson pushing them, we were on the side, you know, no problem. I'm just going to say it again, I'm calling on the preachers in this town to get their empty churches full of these kids off the street and see what they can do with them in a positive way. That's what I'd like to see.
Johnny, I want to say I appreciate my pastor, our church, Walnut Park Baptist Church, and all of our leaders we have there. On Wednesday nights, we go out and pick up four busloads of kids, and we average about sixty, seventy kids and youth every Wednesday, and I'm proud of my church, and I appreciate all the effort the church does and the pastor does, and I really appreciate that, and I will be there Sunday, because he'll, you know, he'll talk to me Sunday, I will be there. I just want to have a note saying the 20th of July, we will have a third Saturday in Alabama City, it starts at five and it ends at nine, it'll be music. I think there's two or three groups, we'll have our usual food we have there to eat, it'll all be there. I just said our usual food, I didn't say what this time, but it'd be our usual food. We had a meeting last night, Alabama City Association, it went out well. Our next meeting is going to be July the 29th, I think it is, on a Monday at 5:30 at the old fire station in Alabama City, if anybody wants to come and be involved in that. That's all I have.
Mr. President, I forgot to ask the chief upstairs, that we had a pretty safe Fourth of July weekend, chief, I think? Good, good. I know that there were several communities who didn't, and I'm just thankful that we did get through our Fourth of July weekend without any major incidents or anything like that, so, again, you know, we discussed upstairs some issues about fireworks and the whole nine yards, and I'm not sure if this council is ready to tackle that issue or not. And when you think about something that happens once a year, at the most twice a year, that I think we have set celebrations, I believe it is, you know, why would you want to disturb something like that? But at any rate, I understand that it do upset a lot of people. As a matter of fact, we were discussing it here, Fourth of July night, we were out here at City Hall watching the fireworks, and it came up about the fact that the fireworks is close to the hospital, and I'm wondering what is the effect on the people who were there, who are seriously ill, and what have you. So, again, there's some uncomfortability for a minute or two, and so do you give up, or do you throw the baby out with the bathwater, I guess syndrome is what I'm trying to say, for just a few minutes of celebration and a few minutes of celebrating what our country's all about? So it's a fine line that the council and the government has to walk when we start looking at these type of issues, but I was proud of our celebration, the fireworks was real nice, even though Johnny, I couldn't get into the council parking space, because Johnny was camped out with his bed and his chairs and.
TV.
TV and everything else he had there, so I couldn't park, I just had to sit out there in the rain and watch it, but it was okay, Johnny, I appreciate you not moving.
You know, Robert, if you'd come on time, maybe thirty minutes earlier, you'd catch your place.
I was there before the fireworks started, that was early. That's all I have.
Mr. President, if I could say one more thing on this right here, we are going to have a meeting of the Public Safety Committee, it's going to be in two weeks, and we're going to discuss the noise issue again. We had a few problems this past Fourth of July on some stuff, and we're going to go over that, and she's going to have some recommendations for us at that time. That's all. Robert, I happened to be in the hospital a year or two back when they had that, you could hardly hear it.
Well, good, that reinforced.
It was beautiful to watch, but you didn't, really couldn't, couldn't hear much. That's pretty good.
That's good enough.
And you couldn't open your window and hear it, could you, Ma?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Just to speak to the issue of the, of at least one of the subcommittees, the Youth Programs Subcommittee. Again, one of the things I do want to make sure I highlight is that the Advisory Council and the Subcommittee are not competing interest. You know, and I really haven't had a whole lot of that to present itself, but just to be clear, those two aren't competing interest. One of the things that is going to happen is that Advisory Council is made up of a number of people who function in private settings relative to youth programs and who have some great ideas. Trust me, there are no shortages of ideas. There are a number of people who have some very good ideas in terms of what we can do as a city as it relates to our youth programs. Where our opportunities lie, I think, and I don't want to try to speak for that committee because they've got their own work to do, but I think where our opportunities lie is to try to utilize our existing infrastructures, whether we're talking about churches or whether we're talking about the infrastructure that exists within the city, with our community centers and ballparks and our library and things of that nature. So that's the big opportunity we've got, and I think people really have to wrap their minds around the fact that, I mean, unless the folks at the United Way and some of the other private groups that drive funding, unless they've got some new money that they can speak to, there really isn't a whole lot of new public monies to devote to programs, so we've got to be very creative in terms of what we do in utilizing the existing funding sources and the existing infrastructure. So it'll be interesting, I'm excited about what may come out of the Subcommittee, and one of the things that I want to reiterate that was pointed out a couple of weeks ago in the work session, is that this is not all about athletic programs. I think when we started talking about youth programs, we put a lot of emphasis on athletic programs, because the landscape dominated by ballparks and gyms and things of that nature, but there are a lot of our children who need access to facilities or who need to understand that there are programs out there that don't necessarily involve athletics. So, again, there's going to be some good things, some good discussion and some good recommendations, I think, that'll come out of all of this. And I think people should prepare themselves for the fact that, you know, at the end of the day, there are going to be some good recommendations, not everybody's idea is going to be implemented. We, you know, that's just not going to, you know, I think Bill Cosby said it best, the quickest way to fail is to try to please everybody. So everybody is not going to be pleased, but I think we'll have some good ideas and some good recommendations that'll come out of this that are going to benefit our young people, and if you're serious about wanting to meet the needs of our young people, I think you should really get behind any effort that's positive towards developing ideas for our young people. That's all I have.
Hey, Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. On last week, I spoke to the fact that, the week prior to that, there was a community meeting at, in East Gaston, and that new liberty Pastor Simmons was host to that meeting, and there were several organizations there, and the topic, the great topic was youth and activities in the city, and this is an outgrowth of the closing of the Boys and Girls Club, which caught most of us, almost all of us, by surprise. As a result of that, those two buildings closing, it made us aware, some of us were already aware, but it made more people aware of the deficiency, the severe deficiency that we have in our city for our youth. Now, Councilman Williams did say, you know, this is more than just about basketball or baseball or football or sports, the arts will be involved with this, the arts, that's a part of the recreational activities that'll be offered to our kids. And this youth advisory council that was generated, that was started at that meeting, will be meeting tomorrow at the United Way office on Fourth Street at 3:00. And we expect there will be different agencies, there'll be churches there, there will be, in the city, Parks and Recreation, Mayor, we are going to ask that someone is there from Parks and Rec. And I think we're on the right path, you know, to coming together as a community to resolve all, some of the issues. We're not going to resolve them all, we're not going to have an answer for everybody, but we know that the position that we're in now is not the position that we need to be in with our youth. So whatever we do, whatever improvements we make, will be determined by the participation of our whole community, not just any one segment, not just the church, not just United Way, not just the city, but the whole community. And we're looking forward to your participation in that to accomplish the task that we need to accomplish. And Johnny mentioned about his church, you know, I'm proud of my church too, you know, I'm proud of the outreach programs that we have in our church, and I wish, if we had the, if we had a gym, you know, boy, that would tickle us to death, because we would have activities going on in there every night for these kids. We just don't have a facility. So that's a challenge to all those institutions that have the facilities that need to house our kids in the evenings, to step up to the plate and take charge. And we did have a successful Fourth of July, and I'll just comment real briefly on fireworks. Under no circumstances am I going to ever agree not to have fireworks on a couple of holidays a year. And, you know, Gaston and the All Patriots Association, Ben, precipitated the fireworks that we had on Fourth of July at 9:00 that night. Beautiful event, enjoyed by all of our citizens and everything. But, you know, there are a couple of events, a couple of times a year that I'm going to advocate fireworks, and I'm going to say, shoot your fireworks, you know, and the police leave you alone, as long as, as long as you're not in that timeframe that they say, don't shoot them, you know. Kids, shoot your little bottle rockets, you know, shoot your little finger firecrackers, you know, and stuff like that, having to have a good time when we have those types of celebrations. Thank you.
Mayor?
Hey, thank you. We have a visitor today, Mr. Tom Sanders, you want to say a few words? He's with Job Corps, he used to be superintendent in.
Yeah, I work with the Job Corps, and here at my company, that's what we do, we serve the sixteen and fourteen, most of the time, every year, we compete and compete, we're on career success page, but I'm actually in a position of working with outreach and community, we're making decisions, and try to see how our. leadership and job. See how our job is centered together. See if you can guess something like that.
Right. Yes, sir. Glad to have you here today.
You did get the time to let me meet him tomorrow, right?
I did.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say a couple things. And, you know, it is hard to get the word out. Like, we started something, I got with Parks and Rec about five years ago, I guess, and all the elementarys or most of them, I think, they have an Edge program where kids, all the kids can really stay until 5:00 PM, I think, and then their parents pick them up after work. The Edge program, they pay $25 a week, and they get one hour of tutoring, and then they get to go to the gym. Well, the other kids who can't afford to pay, they're in the gym to start with. So what we started doing in Parks and Rec, when the ones who pay $25, get an hour of tutoring from 3:00 to 4:00, they go to the gym. With Parks and Rec people, take the other kids into a room and help them do homework and have study hall. And, you know, that's just one of the many things. We pretty much have iPads, I think, in all our elementary schools now. It seems to be going really good. But that, you know, and I'm, I used to be a sports fanatic. That's why I can't get around too good anymore. But there's other things besides sports when you get so old, and you got to have an education to go with anything you do. And we want to keep pushing forward for, for different things and different ideas to help our youth. I mean, we just really have got to do that. Thanks.
Okay. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.